Recite the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda will be the approval of minutes, whether there be additions, corrections, questions or concern. Not all undertake a motion to approve the minutes as written. Motion by Commissioner Maitiri to approve the minutes as written is their second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. No any more discussion on minutes. Not hearing any of those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes approved. Uh, next on the agenda, or on the unofficial agenda is the approval of the official agenda. I guess one topic that did come up here that we can probably, um... We can probably do that maybe towards the end part of the meeting, but I know Commissioner Holm mentioned that we would probably not be able to make the next meeting if we were willing to move it to a different date, which we have done in the past with things. I know the next meeting is supposed to be November 7th. Just kind of thinking in my mind moving it toward November 9th, which would be the following Thursday, the first Thursday of the month. But, um, we'll just put on the agenda item that we are going to consider moving the November meeting and discuss it later. And is there any other additions?
I have a couple little things I'd like to discuss, but I mean, we can do it whenever.
Well, like, like road matter stuff?
City of Hague, yeah, and road matter.
City of Hague?
Yeah.
Well, we can probably just put it at the end, right after Kathleen Dosh is on at noon there, and then after that, we can just have a discussion about the city of Hockecks. We'll just move everything towards the back of the agenda with that discussion, so.
Yeah.
Same with the moving, moving the date possible, so. Any other additions, corrections? Not undertake a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Holm makes a motion to approve the amended agenda. Second. Second by Commissioner Maitiri. Any more discussion on the amended agenda? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye. Not opposed. Amended agenda approved. Now, we have old and unfinished business. Has anybody found a county committee member to replace Corvay Over?
No, I asked a couple more people and eventually I'll find it, right? Personally, I haven't found nobody yet.
Okay. Then, uh, housing authority board member for Diane Culver?
I have somebody interested. They're gonna let me know here.
Okay.
So they're...
I think we'll just keep that on the old and unfinished business and in the meantime, this search continues. Next item would be the public nuisance on 8080 Highway 83 South, Linton. Joe, do you have any updates or anything?
Not really any updates. It's looking more like probably the second week of November that we'll be able to actually physically get on the property and clean it up, so.
Okay, so that court order is going to be going through. I, I was contacted by Kevin. He left a voicemail on his work and I haven't really called him back because he just basically called and said that, uh, he has no idea what's going on, has no idea that, you know, the property's an issue and which, I mean, with all the paperwork being sent out and stuff, it's probably different. I know he said he has made an attempt to clean up the property. I've been by there. I mean, it looks different. I don't know if I would say it's better or worse, but it is different. I guess some stuff's been moved around or replaced, things like that, but I...
Get through that.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, I think we're still in the same boat we're at, so at this point, I mean, he's being served all the paperwork that, I mean, like with this court order process, he had a, he had a period to...
Right, he's gonna, he still has more time.
Right, so there's no scenario where we have all this stuff going on that he's not really aware of. I mean, well, I mean, basically, like, if there's a renewal of the court order, he had a period to respond and all that stuff, right? So, I mean...
So what is the deadline on that deal?
I would have to double check, but I think it'll be sometime in November, around November.
Oh, you mean when we'll get the court order renewed?
Right, right.
And then would it be good for another year then if that was the case?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so that would be basically you'd have another...
Yeah, till 2024 in November.
Okay.
That we would have to clean it up.
Well, I guess for now, it kind of seems like that we'll probably have more information on that court order by the next meeting. I mean, that'll be within a week or so.
Yeah, it should, it should, yeah.
Say for now, there's really just nothing to do except wait and see what happens there?
Yeah, I would say at the next, uh, unless something changes here, the next meeting probably look to schedule if we can get it done in November and schedule it.
So what do they do there? Do they take these vehicles, everything he's got sitting there, or how does that work?
Yeah, you know, that's probably what the judge was gonna say. I mean, I guess we probably have a little discretion if we don't want to take, you know, but he'll, my guess is he'll probably move the vehicles off. That's what he did in the past, at least the ones he wanted to keep, so.
Okay, well, I'd say for now, pending that paperwork and court order, there's really nothing to do, so.
Right.
I just leave it there for now, so. Okay, um... I guess at 9:15 is the public hearing to consider the petition order for the closure of the section line that we dealt with last month at the table. So I guess for now, we do have about 10 minutes, so, uh, why don't we just skip to something shorter, like the one thing that...
We can do that. David Schmidt's not coming in.
David Schmidt's not coming in?
No, he called.
Oh, Dave's not coming in?
We can discuss that and talk about that.
Okay, well, I kind of have an idea too that's been brought up before, so you want to just discuss that now, Leonard?
Sure, we can do that.
Because, I mean, the main thing, so David Schmidt was on the agenda for 9:30 to request a change stop sign to a yield sign by the Assembly of God Church on Linton. That's right, coming out of the Tower Hill Road.
He said it used to be the other way around at one point, but I don't know what the...
Well, this had, this had come up, this had come up when I was first commissioner and I believe Nick Lawler was the road superintendent, and he had told me that the reason it got changed was because, and I don't remember if they, how they came to that, to say if it was like an engineer they had hired or something like that, but they'd come to the conclusion that it was, it was basically too dangerous to have a yield sign off that hill because everybody, nobody was slowing down here off the hill and shooting through that intersection, that, you know, faster than the speed limit type scenario, because everybody complains about stopping at the bottom of that hill, which I do understand, but the reason why it was because the traffic flow was just, because it's basically flat on three parts of the intersection, then you have this one side where people were just blitzing through the intersection, and that's why they changed it that way.
Right, I think he thought it would save the road, you know, as far as even, even when you come, the load comes down the hill, it's washboarding.
Yes.
And then going the other way, going up the hill, get stopped, put load or something, that takes a lot to get going again. It's just sunk the other way around if that was better.
I don't disagree with that, but I think there's some, uh, I want to say without looking at, just kind of recalling my own memory, there's some pretty solid research as to why that got changed. It was not, it's more than just a preference. There's some rules of the road type engineering design went into that idea because of the way, you know, like I said, I, I don't disagree that that's probably a big reason why that part of roads just, it's all, it's inflated and three days later, it's destroyed. I don't disagree with that, but traffic safety element of it might...
I don't know. Is there any legal, legal way that's supposed to be with that?
Well, like I said, I think that's something, I mean, the only thing to probably do would be to probably bring it up again with a, with a, you know, maybe a wall engineering somebody and see if there's any...
So which one did he want changed to one coming down the hill?
I think they'd want it flipped, where you would, you would stop going north-south and then east-west, like coming down the hill and then coming on the highway with the yield, or not stop. If you just flip it, which it used to be that way 10, 20 odd years ago, and then it...
I think it would help save the road a little bit, but I mean, like I said, maybe it's more dangerous, like...
Well, that's what I was told, was I think it has something to do with, like Phillip Fetter's property and everything, with the sight distance with the hill, the speed and everything was...
That's the only stuff out there.
Right, that was the reason why it's coming off of that hill.
Well, that's why I think it's a public vote, please.
That, you know, if you're talking about a road scenario, that would probably be better because I do, I do agree with the road side of it, and that stretch for that first eighth or quarter mile is always terrible here because everybody's either accelerating up it or decelerating down it, so. But I know that Phillips Farm caused a sight distance issue with the, the yield on that direction. I know, because that's been brought up before, so that would be the only way to change it, probably. Or, like you said, instead of changing it, the other alternative, consider doing something to that road other than that. It's a here-to-busesque road. I mean, it's, it's amazing the traffic that it's on, it's a lot. So that might be another...
Well, if the traffic is more east and west than it's north and south, like, oh...
Well, I wouldn't say that. There's north and south traffic too, because that's the road I live on, and I mean, there's...
No, it's south.
No?
No, but it's the direct length between the Temec Road and Linton, and that is a very, very busy square. That whole, that whole square corridor between the Tower Hill Road and going up to Temec is, it serves that whole, right, serves a fifth of the county really, between all the entire folks and everybody that's up to Linton, they all take that road back, so, uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's something to probably consider, more so than changing the signs around with the traffic safety aspect, maybe just trying to consider an alternative to that road. You know, I don't know exactly, if there's pavement or some kind of something that kind of observable.
The east-west road is not a federalated road either, is it?
No, not to my knowledge.
And the question, is it pure, is it cops on there directing traffic, so I'm just asking?
Oh, I don't know about that. That'd be a question for Gary if there's, you know, because there's a cemetery there on the north side of that intersection, I like to, yeah. But anyway, I mean, I just know going forward, I mean, I, when I seen that agenda, I already know it's been discussed, and there's, there was some, it wasn't just a decision that by the commission, there was a recommendation from an engineer or something, and that's why it was done that way, so I, and...
Well, you just...
Right, I don't disagree with it at all. Traffic saving side probably overruled the road conditions there, but, so, that being said, it would be, that idea to consider doing something to that road, maybe just to improve it then, but, yeah. We still just got a couple minutes to that public...
This is a... Those are just straight two...
It's a straight shot.
Yeah, I think there isn't a sign there.
No, there are, there are the...
Is it?
I thought so. One thumb down, like right by...
No, two, one, one.
South.
Going north and south.
I think there's a sign coming up. I think there was a yield sign there.
I drive every day, so I don't know what's going to happen. I don't, there's no... I think generally people slow down if they see someone at the inner, like, I know Chip would be like, if I see someone pulling up to it, I slow down, make sure they stop, but then I...
There's a lot of people who don't care.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a busy intersection. Oh, yeah, it's busy, it's a, it's pretty busy.
I'll be up, like, a strong one.
So, yeah, I, and I think that's, I don't think so, not without, not without really having a good reason other than just doing it, I think could cause some problems, so. But, uh, well, it's close enough to 9:15. It'll open the public hearing to consider the petition for order to discontinue, close and vacate a section line in Evans County and Township 130, range 79, between sections 28.7, beginning at the point where the northeast corner of section 28 meets the northwest corner of section 27 and running south to a point where the northeast corner of the southeast quarter of section 28 meets the northwest corner of the southwest quarter of section 27, as provided the North Dakota Century Code 24-07-05 and 24-07-03 tabled from last month. So, hope you guys all got that, so I can read that again. So, uh, this public hearing is open. If there's anybody for or against, I think I've seen anybody in attendance. Be advised.
Somebody submitted a video.
Greg, you are giving a video of him driving section.
Okay.
Yeah, what was that?
As much testimony as we'll probably get.
I don't know if they're gonna be out here, but they only said a couple things, like saying, I might have all sides of the road and driving section. That's all they said.
Who's that?
Greg, you are.
Van Beek. Screen's not on.
Shut that mic off.
So any other testimony for, for against closing the section?
Coming from us, from a public hearing, opposed.
Oh, this is a public hearing. I mean, you can speak if you want. I mean, we believe the public hearing open in case somebody would be planning to come in, because it's only fair, but I think we can probably just start discussing it at this point. It doesn't seem like anybody's going to be in attendance. I didn't get notified by anybody against it. I did get notified by people for it.
For what?
For closing it, that was, um...
I, I guess I feel it's, he actually, that looked pretty good for a section line. I mean, it's all him to drive around, to drive it.
I mean, the main discussion, I guess, or the main issue, the main engine, whether it's the simple fact that the century code does allow for it, they have, to my knowledge, fulfilled every part of the, the law. They have the adjacent landowners, they themselves are basically petitioning to close it. You know, I mean, nobody seems to really be protesting it.
Yeah, but why, why do you want to, why do you want to do that? I mean, that's kind of, everybody down the road, I got some section lines on my land too. I got neighbors who'll, us two go together and say, we want to close this down. I don't want to bunch of people having on this road. So if we go through an illegal process to get it closed...
Well, if you go through the legal process to close them, then I guess that's the process that's allowed.
That's what I mean, then everybody's gonna want to do it.
Well, but I don't think there's any argument that not, I don't think every section line in the county should be open. I mean, there's a lot of them out there that aren't open. This is the perfect example.
Why start closing them down? Why not to give a variance like we did with, over there by Frank Willey?
I'll never participate in another variance ever again, so, that's what's concerned. I don't...
Both these guys, both these guys, Francis, Frank Willey, and over there, they were in my district. Over there, we just gave them a variance, did give a, you know, they didn't even ask for one, we just gave them one because we were commissioners. Now here, we're gonna, what are we doing here?
Well, we're not really doing anything in this aspect. I mean, they're petitioning for it, this is a...
Well, they didn't even get a chance. They didn't petition over there, we just, we just gave them a variance, and here, this is what you're gonna get. I mean, that was wrong on our part too, you know? I, I think just shutting down section lines, I think that's the wrong thing to do. If you want to give them anything, give them a variance.
Yeah, I don't want to do that again either.
Well, we do it over there, so why we treat it like...
I said again, we did, so we did, then maybe it was wrong, but I wouldn't do it again. I just said I wouldn't do it again.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, because you did something once, means you're gonna do it forever and keep making the same mistakes. That's pretty foolish, so.
Well, we made a mistake over there, then we should admit we made a mistake and drop that lawsuit and pay our defenses and be done with it.
Well, we can discuss that if you want. I don't think that's really pertinent to the public hearing right now.
No, but, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, they're both in my district, and we're treating one one way and one the other way.
Well, we're not treating them the other way. This one, they're, they're following the...
We haven't treated nothing yet.
No, but I mean, that's kind of, we want to shut it down or close these down, well, I know we're gonna get a handful of people coming in when a section line's closed.
Right, but I mean, the proper, the proper process with it is if people don't want those closed, then they, they petitioned against it, they come to the public hearing and they, I mean, we even tabled this to give it another...
Okay, why, why did they start that in the first place, make section lines? So people could get to their land, right? So down the road, if he ever sells in that land, how are they gonna, how are those people supposed to get there?
Well, see, that's what, he told me that the only way he can get to his land is if it's closed.
That's what Greg Van Beek told him.
Right, right.
Okay, so why, why do that? Just because one guy says, well, I'm not gonna let you go in my land, I'll let you go in my land if you close out the section line? I mean, that's...
Right, but really, when you think about it, they're the ones taking the risk on it, because if they're gonna reduce access to their land, then they're basically, I mean, you take the scenario where they close the section line, now this entire piece becomes one piece of land because there's no access to it.
Right.
They're taking that risk though, that's what I'm saying. They're petitioning to do it, they're taking the risk. I don't really think, I mean, I think there's an issue with that in the sense that, I mean, if they're the ones that want to take the risk, where they, now they can't sell an eighty unless they reestablish the section line, which they could...
Yeah, but who's gonna, okay.
They could petition and reopen the section line down the road if that was the case.
It's never gonna happen, you know that, Greg's...
Let me ask you something, Joe. Law says that I have right of ingress egress, correct? If I buy a piece of land, that the section line is closed? I did confront law by law that I need ingress egress to this piece of property back there.
If you buy property that doesn't have access, but you could access it through the person who's selling you the property as land, unless it specifically states on the deed that there's no access with it, that does create a constructive easement. But the court would have to figure out where that, you know, where your right would be exactly, probably be the easiest access point. You know, with this one, the piece that they're closing, they're also creating another, uh, they're rebuilding a road essentially on the, on the other side of that section, and, um, and there's an easement that runs with the land, so whoever buys Larry's land in the future would have that right of access with it, so.
With that easement attached to that property. Yep. Well, because there's a lot of property out in prairie lands where there is no section lines.
Well, I mean, technically...
You go west of Linton and some of those places, there's no section lines unless, unless they're just fenced off. Why can't they just put guardrails on both ends? Cap crossings are a matter of doubt, do you?
Well, that's what I mean. Why, why close the section line down? That's just gonna cause problems down the road, I think. I mean, that's my opinion, but... I mean, then you say like, okay, we could go to reverse process to get that back. Well, who's ever gonna, you think Greg Van Beek's gonna sign a petition that we're gonna have, we're gonna let somebody come back in here and put a section line back in?
Well, I think, I think the conversation isn't about, uh...
No, but you gotta think...
It was about them, because they're most likely gonna be gone in that scenario, and it'll be two different landowners or multiple different landowners that want to...
You gotta, you gotta think about that too, then. I mean, those people down the road...
Yeah, but we really don't have to think about that in this case, because the current landowners are willing to follow the law and petition to close the section line, and that's the current situation. I mean, looking forward, a hundred years down the road, I, I mean, if it were to get developed and that were to be the case, then, then that's a bridge to cross.
This was established a hundred years ago down the road, section line. Why, why, why would, you know, well, I don't know, just, me, I think that's wrong. I guess, I just think, why, why start changing and closing down section lines? If that's the case, like I said, I'm gonna want to close down some of mine.
Well, there's a process to follow for that.
Yeah, but, okay, so are we gonna grant everybody, everybody that comes in here and follows the law to get a section line closed, or are we gonna grant them to do it?
Well, first of all, the biggest thing would be if the landowners agreed to it. You know, why did we close one at Temec?
Yeah, we shouldn't have. Probably shouldn't have, none of you did.
If I clarify, the Temec was not a section line. That was a road.
No, I know it was a section line, but...
There's a big difference.
No, I know, but it was, it's still a road. It's still a road.
But a section line, I mean, that's a republic. Let's say somebody wants to go hunting back there. They want to go hunting back there.
Get permission to walk in.
Well, they designated permission to go on their land anyway.
If it's closed, not if you got a section line.
Yeah, that's what you guys do, yeah.
There was not really an established trail there, was there, that I can see?
Well, I mean, it wasn't...
And to me, it looks like one of the section lines has never really been used except the adjoining landowners. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, there's section lines out there, well, I mean, I just drove the other day, I took Eighteenth Avenue, which the wind towers have built up there between, you know, because that's the only road basically around there unless you want to go all the way around.
Right.
That's a section line where if you had the adjoining landowners decide that they want to close it off, I think you'd get a petition from the public, and then that probably wouldn't happen. I mean, the, the facts of this scenario is that all the adjoining landowners and even most of the surrounding neighbors there, which there aren't many, basically signed it saying they don't really care, they don't want access, or they already know that they could get access from one of these guys if they wanted it, probably. I mean, you, you know, it's just, and so that's where the case, you know, kind of just changes with the fact that the law allows it. They petitioned to do it. I mean, it's just a different, it's not like we're going out as a board and closing a section line, but I mean, that's the thing.
We did on the other side.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you keep bringing that up, but that's not turning to this case, that's not the same thing.
Well, that bothers me, because we do one thing, we do one thing on one side and one thing on the other side. Why do we do that?
We're not doing two different things. This is a totally different case. I mean, this is...
Commissioner Madison, may I address the council?
No, it's still a public hearing, so...
Thank you, Commissioners, for putting me on. The Evans County Commissioners have created a lot of confusion in our ROW deals, starting with 90th, what Commissioner Felice referred to. As a need to clarify, 90th State's Attorney Hanson followed North Dakota Century Codes, and the Commissioners disregarded using local zoning variances to fence part of that ROW on the east side of District 5. Now, the Commissioners did not require a petition, signatures, or full public hearing, and ignored multiple century codes. On the other hand, Temec, as well on the west side of District 5, the Commissioners complied with State's Attorney Hanson's advice and used local century codes by requiring petition, signatures, and public hearing. So the Commissioners felt public whether they will be using the century codes from here on out, local zoning, answers, or both. Because this is the confusion that we said, this is the confusion that we said was gonna happen. You use a local variance, you get to play God. Now, this right up here, Larry and my great, procedure has been involved. And Joe has guided them along with Temec. If you Commissioners are not petitioned to keep it open, you have the right to close it. That's the purpose of the century codes. The problem is, from one side of District 5 to the other, we're doing two different things. So which will be the policy in the future, following century codes or using local zoning variances? And I think you've already answered that. I think you've already said we're not going down there.
Right, well, I would, I would say it seems to be that the variance cause more problems than it solves, and that's why we're not interested in doing them, so.
And here's the problem it created, meaning it allowed farms to move a fence... It allowed farms to move a fence to the middle or down blocking access. But the right is not closed. So if you are somebody from the public, and there was hunter farm, you drive up to that area, and you see that fence going down, right? You don't know what's going on there. And you have to supply sixty-six feet, so what happens? I'm supplying thirty-three now. The public doesn't know. They can't use all sixty-six, so now I'm supplying all sixty-six feet in that right of way, right? And that's the problem with the local zoning variants. As for out here on what Larry's doing and Greg's doing, as long as they're following Century Codes, they're legal. If nobody's petitioning it, they're legal. But this is a point that I wanted to make.
Hey, well, I understand that. This is a public hearing, it's fine.
Right, we can't be using Commissioners' positions, and some of them Commissioners are now gone, to weaponize their positions to say, we're gonna grant the variants here, but as Joe has had them do in Tamik, I followed that very close, it was followed perfectly to the law. And so was this one out here on the west side. That's why it's so dangerous when the county tries to hold state law. You can't do it because you're, because you're safe.
So if they do follow the law like they did over there on that side, we still have the right to say no, right?
Yeah, or, or, you have to make the decision on this. I mean, the petitions before you, uh, you have to consider certain factors, and you think, if you think that there's readily accessible routes, you know, for access for Larry, they've already talked about it last month, what they were planning, um, you know, if it's a road that's not being used by other members around there, uh, you know, you could also, i- if there's natural obstacles, um,
I mean, he drove that whole section, he drove that whole section line, I mean, it's drivable.
You basically only have to find one of those things. They use or language in this Century Code, not, not and language, so you could, you could follow, you know. I think there's plenty of reasons you could find that, or you could make a reasonable argument that you could be in favor of closing the section line, and I understand your points, too. It'd be reasonable if you guys decided not to close the section line.
So how would it work now if me and my neighbor got together, wanna close a section line? We could do it? Nope?
Well, you have to get, you have to, you have to get six, uh, the petition has to be supported by six landowners in the, in the area.
So, I mean, there's a lot of section lines, so, all my neighbors, we could all get along, we don't wanna, we don't want hunters driving down this road anymore. We have me and my neighbor at land on both sides, so if I get my two neighbors and a couple neighbors to sign, we could shut down the section line.
Potentially, I mean, you have to look at the, the nature of your section line. You know, some, some of these section lines, you can actually see a trail there, maybe that people are actually using them, uh, for farming or for hunting, or whatever the case may be. And some of them, you know, kinda dead end in different spots. So I, I think you can distinguish one situation from the other, potentially. But as you're saying, yeah, I mean, you, you might be able to file the same petition, and maybe they approve it, maybe they don't, depending on the situation.
Due to, due to the terrain of the land, or whatever, it's like you say, on an established trail, it isn't following the true section line. Can they alter that and say, this is the section line, a straight shot, and you're coinc, and ignore the established trail if you are off the right of way? What are you doing in a case like that?
You can drive anywhere within sixty-six feet, right?
Right.
I mean, it doesn't
What happens if that's outside of the sixty-six feet? And the established trail goes around this grid?
There's a lot of
Or a hill.
Well, I mean, you can, there are situations where established trails can be considered broken after so many years of usage, heavy usage. But again, that doesn't happen automatically. Somebody would, yeah, somebody would potentially have to get a court order to say that was a road if, if the landowners said wanted to say, okay, stop, stop driving on my land, stay on the trail, or get out. So that would be kind of an interesting case, I guess. It would depend on a lot of factors. How many years has it been used? How heavily is it being used? Has it been used by more than one person? Did they have permission? All those sort of things.
Well, I think you could argue that the reason for the process being what it is and having the public hearing and the public notices, if that road is being used that much, someone's gonna dispute. I mean, really, someone in that area, or that specific usage, whatever that would may be, you know, I, that's why, I mean, conversation kind of goes with that, that there's really nobody in dispute of this. And that's where, you know, not saying for or against, but I mean, you're looking at the information and say, well, why do you wanna close it? People use it. Doesn't seem that people do, otherwise there really would be a second part to that process. Especially we even tabled it, because we felt the public hearing was maybe a little on the short notice side. Didn't really seem to change, right?
I just think that's a bad idea, to go down that road.
Well, you're more than welcome to that opinion. I mean, that's why, I mean, we do take motions and we vote on it, the entire process is to create a legal avenue for them to bring a petition to us to vote on if we'll close it or not. It's basically the Cliff Notes version of it, so, that's basically here, now the decision is ours. I mean, there's, you don't have to grant it just because they followed all the rules of the law neither, that's just, you know, but.
So that being the case here, and now on, the same thing, Commissioners would just use Century Codes, right?
I mean, it's tough to say what's gonna happen from now on, it hasn't happened yet, but, I mean, yeah, I don't know, yeah.
So if you give somebody a variance, how long does a variance last? Forever?
Suppose you could stipulate how long the variants last? I mean, that's the problem with variances, too. They're, they're kind of open-ended, there's not a lot of laws and rules.
Are you talking about the other instance again, or?
No, like, like out here, let's say we gave Greg enough a variance. How long to give a variance?
Well, I don't know, you're talking about a variance to close the section line?
No, that they could use, to use the section line.
Well, they could, well, they're using it now, I mean, they're
Well, but not closing.
Right. Well, I, I don't, the only reason they wanna close it, because he doesn't want a road to be constructed in the future. He doesn't really care what's, he doesn't really need anything different from what's happening right now. But he doesn't want two roads on both sides of this property. If he's gonna build a road on the east side, then he wants to make sure there's not gonna be a, a side, and doesn't have any control over the section line. So that, that's his reason for closing it. I don't know that variance would solve his problem.
Well, for the sake of time, so we can stay on the agenda, I will, uh, consider this public hearing closed. It's almost nine forty, so I think, let's bring on the nine forty topic, which would be Alan Pasco?
Pasco.
Okay, wow, it had the S C N E H thing. Wow, that
It confuses everyone. It runs with rascals, just easier.
Well, the floor is yours, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Do you need to wait screen share, so I'm not gonna attempt that, but I'm just gonna fill up my notes so I can follow along.
If you want a screen share, I mean, I'll plug my table and plug in two years.
And which screen?
Right there. How's it work?
Thank you, though. Apologies, I'm just getting over a cold. So we're here today to, we visit a subject that's been discussed for fifty-three years off and on there, a bridge over the Missouri, uh, midway between Bow Bridge and Bismarck, North Dakota. We're not here really seeking action today. Uh, the goal of this was just to have a conversation, to talk about kind of why do you think they're, this makes sense? To share where we're at in the process, and to get feedback from you on, uh, what you think we should be looking at or doing, uh, to make the case on, on the Emmett County side of the river. A little history first, the river was dammed in nineteen sixty-three. That damming, uh, created hardship for the St. Louis Sioux Tribe. Uh, they lost over, I'm gonna give you the exact numbers on that off, uh, a hundred twenty miles of real, fifty-six thousand acres of very valuable, area and wetland areas. In nineteen seventy, Homer's authorized, um, the Army Corps of Engineers through the Flood Control Act to build a bridge, not just authorized, but directed. The Army Corps built a bridge somewhere between Bow Bridge and Bismarck. Uh, the Army Corps worked from nineteen seventy to seventy-seven on doing so, and in nineteen seventy-seven, ran out of steam. They, they, they met in opposition, and by seventy-seven, they decided the project hasn't acted. It was reactivated in nineteen eighty-four, began by the Army Corps, and in nineteen eighty-six, Homer's passed the Water Resources Development Act, which provided a funding mechanism for the bridge. At that point, it was specified by ninety percent federal, ten percent non-federal, and the North Dakota Department of Transportation agreed to be the non-federal partner in building the, the bridge. In nineteen ninety-four, the Army Corps substantially completed an environmental impact study. That impact study was presented to Emmett County, Sioux County, and both counties were in agreement, I think in agreement through resolution, that they wanted to proceed with the bridge. Uh, the Army Corps then put together a memorandum of agreement, and that agreement was passed around between the counties, St. Louis Sioux Tribe, and the Army Corps. From nineteen ninety-six until two thousand, uh, again, the initiative, the effort lost steam. Uh, the original sighting of the bridge was north of Perry Ants Casino, uh, on a, on a designation denoted as D three. Uh, there were some culturally sensitive areas that were uncovered during this, this time, and I was, the tribe itself, that, that couldn't find a, a way forward prior to the earmark coming that had been set aside expired. Um, so it was that exploration that, that pushed the project into, into the future again. It was attempted to be revived in two thousand and four by New Travel Administration, New Travel Government. They worked hard to get it back on the table. The Army Corps' EIS from ninety-four needed to be updated to reflect the new location that did not have culturally sensitive alums on it. The cost of that was two million dollars, and the tribe had a very difficult time finding those funds. They offered to pay for them themselves, and the Army Corps said, we can't take your private money, or private money, we can only take public money off, just by, back of Congress. So by two thousand and ten, it, it died again. There's been conversation a couple of other times over the last few years to get it going. It came up again three or four months ago, and we've been working to, to see if there's consensus. Uh, hurdles we've cleared so far, uh, we have a very positive meeting with Senator Kramer, who is in full support, Senator Hoben is in support. Um, we met with the federal DOT, Pete Buttigieg, and presented the case to him. Uh, he also expressed interest. We've met with, uh, the Assistant Secretary of the Army, Michael Connor, who's in charge of the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, did the presentation in front of him, went to the site itself. He didn't even know that the bridge had ever been talked about. Uh, so he went back, he provided us a copy of the EIS from ninety-four, but by all accounts, that EIS is gonna need to be completely redone. There's just been too many changes, too many additions, so I don't know if an update is even gonna be, be possible. A slight anymore expedite and environmental assessment could be done, but that's in the Army Corps and the Corps of Engineers' hands. And the things of real import, the benefits, the benefits, I think, are, are substantial for both sides of the river. Uh, there is, this is the longest gap without a bridge on a major waterway in North America at over a hundred miles. Um, everyone who is in agriculture on the, the west side of the river has to bring their cows around to the auction lots on the east side for sale. Um, it, having a bridge, I think, will create an economic corridor that will allow for easy access, easy transmission back and forth between goods and services. I think employment opportunities will, will come as a result of it. Um, projected traffic counts, based on the formulas used, uh, in two thousand and ten, the, and considering both sides of the river, it's about twelve hundred cars, twelve to fifteen hundred cars per day are anticipated to go across the bridge. So it could have a, a good impact on, on communities on both sides, a lifting impact. Um, one other things, the cost of the bridge back in two thousand and ten was projected ninety-two point five million. When you, you factor in construction inflation over the last ten-year period at four percent, it would be about a hundred forty million now. The last two years, uh, construction inflation has been in the high, into double digits, so probably one fifty, one sixty is more likely. Federal funding is available through a couple of different options that the tribe would pursue, um, and those funding options would be, uh, met at a hundred percent federal, we're, we're confident in that. Uh, we met yesterday with North Dakota DOT, uh, they're on board with the project, they have, they're waiting in the wings. The key stakeholder would likely be the Army Corps of Engineers, and, um, the environmental hurdles will need to be cleared before anything else could happen. So that's where we're at. Before we went any further, I thought it would be a good, and we thought it would be a good idea, to meet with Commissioners, to just have a conversation about it, to talk through it. I know when the EIS happened, uh, letters were sent out, hearings were, were, were held, meetings were made. It's encouraging that in nineteen ninety-four, Emmett County was, uh, an active partner. We would love to see Emmett County as an active partner again. So, I got, I know there are other key stakeholders here who would like to have a, a few moments. Do you have any questions at this point? Do you think I can answer for anyone? I know we're limited on time, but I'm pushing as fast as I can.
Well, we can, because the agenda items after that are a little movable, so if we know what time, we can do that. I guess my question is, just first of all, like, do you have at least a short list, or one or two locations at least, more specifically, that you're even thinking
This may be a bad time for the screen.
Okay, but I mean, that, I guess that would probably just be a curiosity question.
No, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good point. It's gonna be easier from this location, I'm guessing?
Yeah. You got a ETMI?
I do.
Work on it?
I do. I have no appetite for this, in fact, I'm very proud of this. We're right to the bridge crossing locations. So, the, the, the first location that was presented was the D three, which is just north of the casino. That's the one that, uh, was recommended by the Army Corps in nineteen ninety-four, which was, was abandoned. The one that we are looking at is E one. If you've been on the other side of the river, um, this is just south of the casino. It's a four-point-two mile road, leads right down to an area we call Rocker Bottoms. Uh, it's where Perry Ants Marina is right now. Um, so the, that is the, that would be the location of
Can they say the same route as both, if they're from the old phone number?
Yes, I think the boat would actually go, would go a little further south.
It's the same
Yes, exactly, that is the, the same
Right, but it'd be
Yes, I mean, it'd be a little more
It'd be
I think it's down there, the bridge, the bridge there.
So that's close to the power line structures, huh?
It is. The power line structure is, is just immediately to the south, in terms of where the Rocker Bottoms Road hits the, hits the road.
Is that the water plant road?
No, that's
Exactly.
That's up here, that's if you go under Perry dollars.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now the process is, is fine with me.
It'd be crossed almost by the, uh, the Bayside Resort. Right in that
Scored model.
What did they
It's like
It's like
It's not the farthest one south?
Uh, going back one, there was one that was further south. It's less attractive from a development and land standpoint, and it basically can cross and can end at the same point. So from my perspective, this road is already in place, easements are already established. Um, the cost would be significantly lower than this, this approach.
Well, it is
Between here and here?
It's a lot of different
How long, but the ridge is how long, three feet? Uh, it's, it's about a, a kilometer, um, so eight hundred yards, something like that.
Would be the span.
Would be the span of the bridge. Yeah, from shore to shore, access points, access on one.
So where exactly would you move them? I know the west end, but the east end, you know, by the bridge, how would you tie that into there?
Into eighteen oh four?
No, yeah, before eighteen oh four, you're coming out on the land there.
Yep.
The bottom, where they close the bolts now, friend, in that area.
I think, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
The campground's here, it's out over restaurants right here.
Exactly.
Yeah. Four miles north, there's a.
Or that section will probably right here. That section line is kind of.
Yeah, see, the road here is a little bit below that. I think it's exactly about seven thousand on that.
So it's. So with the, you're not only just proposing a bridge, you're proposing basically a road system on each side of the bridge still, too.
Yes.
Basically, would you be planning on using public right-of-way, or would you have to secure easements on private property, or?
To be determined. Okay, that's something you can talk about.
I suppose that depends on the terrain and the path of least resistance for a road.
Depends on the North Dakota DOT also, what they would like to see from it. Because we are tying two state highways together, eighteen oh four, eighteen oh six, you know, they have interest in controlling the entire part, so we would have to turn over use of the Rocker Bottom Road to them to give them full.
Effect.
Yeah. Full responsibility for the span. There's also options where we may parse that, like by the reservation for snow clearing. Snow clearing, from state perspective, that is up to the law. We took a great, we took that way to, all those parts have to get worked out.
Sure. But basically, in the Cliff Notes version, you want to connect eighteen oh six to eighteen oh four with a bridge over the river.
That's exactly.
That's the two-sentence description.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Just saying seventeen notes. And the path is to be determined based on terrain and a variety of other different factors, with fourteen other people in the room speaking, a hundred other people.
Well, I think the Army Corps of Engineers is going to make the determining point, you know. This was part of the nineteen ninety-four environmental impact study. A new impact study is going to come out, and it's still competing. It's not likely going to have these six options, it may have six other new options. We're advocating for what we've shown as E-One here, and we're going to continue to advocate for that, but the impact study, we have no control. We're going to have to pivot based upon what that shows.
Four gates, just in the north side?
South. Just south.
South, yeah. I think one of the things to consider, well, you know your terrain outside the park. You should propose discussions, strategy, or, you know, propose a, do you think, as route, most economical route. Because of the cost of the strike, we have to look at ways to mitigate.
And this is Frank James, the Vice Chairman of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe.
All right, Frank. That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I think this is probably step B in a, or step two in a hundred-step process is probably the easiest way to start, but step one is deciding to even think about it first. Step two is starting to talk to people, so I think it's an interesting prospect, and I suppose going forward, there's going to be a multitude of public hearings and a variety of things, I suppose, that would, you know. Of course, the environmental impact study is going to just probably either continue this project or halt it, basically, and that's probably the big exchange point. Is where to build it before you even decide how big, how long, and how much, so.
So how far down the road can they talk?
I think the estimate for the EIS would be fifteen to eighteen months to have it completed. I think the next step after that would be a remit between all involved parties, Emmens County at that point, Sioux County, all the other key stakeholders.
So it'll probably be a couple of years.
Yeah. It could be quicker. If they grant us an environmental assessment as opposed to an EIS, that could be completed in as fast as six months. It's not a realm of possibility.
I guess one thing to consider is eighteen months from now, there's an election, and in that meantime, three board members on this board are going to have an election. So even the answer you get today might not mean a lot, eighteen months from now, so I, just for a clarification on that, too. Does everybody else have anything to add?
I think it's important, it's better, definitely involve the county and progress to make this back, continue this communication. If that does happen, quickly, it's all decision, like you guys, you know, the facts. Or we share with each other the better, the comfort of the project.
We make a commitment to keep you updated as to progress, so that, you know, all of a sudden, you'll hear from us in twelve months, and it's like, everything's happening at warp speed. So we'll make sure that we're communicating with you.
I wanted to add, too, as a Vice Chairman of Tribe, Sheriff Al Khyer, who made you the point, our administration, communication. I don't, certainly, I want to, in thirteen, can't say what happened in thirteen and twenty twenty-one, but I know since I got back in, they're trying to go a different official government to try to communicate. Think that, you know, that's key, you know, we try to keep that communication going open, otherwise, if something comes up, I'm not communicating the other side, and then something else, you know, but to keep it open, at least we have it, we're on the same page. So that's one of the things that I would say I'm taking pride in, you know, our tribe, Sheriff Al Khyer, that, you know, the last two years, we've really opened the line of communication immensely with North Dakota, and we're now getting into South Dakota, that was kind of almost, it was pretty quiet in South Dakota for a while, but we do have members down there that are served by the county of Porson, in that region of South Dakota, so we're working with the government, the state government as well. So it's important for me, it's important for our administration to continue to do these outreaches, so that we communicate, you know, and the lines are always open. If there's something out there that you hear, you know, well, we ask, you know, if we hear something, we're going to ask you about it, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Good.
Yes, Harold Fraser, under tribal representation of Standing Rock District Thirty-One. Going on, what you're talking about, and just in your opinion, just observation, so you think the section line would be probably an idea if there was to cross that area?
Well, when I, I look at, because I do maps for the county, I was trying to determine, because I had no idea where you guys were thinking, and actually, that was the first thing that crossed the line, was that E-One route. So, I mean, I'm no engineer to tell you, you know, that's the best route, but that's what first came to my mind.
Well, if I'm watching, my experience, vocal is definitely no more, sometimes no more than the engineers, because we live here, so. I just was, you know, thinking what you said there. Because we were lucky, we're down there, kind of, I'd never been in that area, I liked to look at it. Yeah, the day at our office, we talked about it, and that's something that, Doug's our, one of our supervisors, I will, and that's what he said, you know, I think it'd be better. Because of my hearsay, that's kind of a big thing.
Well, I mean, I think the big part of this, more than anything, is that I think once a planned route is at least established, I think that's probably where you're probably going to hear from us the most, because historically, at least with this board, our local stakeholders, our constituents, our landowners, they're pretty vocal on things that they do or don't want, and that's probably going to be just a big hitching point, is whether or not that would be a proper route, or if the interest is even there. You know, I mean, as far as the board here, I think it's pretty early to even say who we're in favor or against it. I don't think I have any problem with at least just exploring the possibilities and seeing what would land. I think that's the beauty of the process of the public hearings and all that, is allow people to actually say something once, actually, I mean, the idea of a bridge, some people might make up their mind beginning to end, it doesn't matter, but the possibilities, it just really depends on it. I guess to reiterate your point, I mean, as far as this process, as long as it's going, you guys are more than welcome to come back here, too. I mean, any communication is always welcome. I mean, so anytime there's additions, project changes, anything like that, movement on your guys' part, I mean, you know, we record our meetings, people like to watch them. Rather than have an hearsay, newspaper articles, it's nice to just have it out in the open. People, people know what's actually being proposed, where the thought process actually is, and so, I mean, a fair, open communication process, I'm all in favor of, too. Glad you guys came, and you'd be more than welcome to attend again, anytime, it's fine.
I just say, I could say something. Following a section line corridor is going to be a lot more friendly to the general public, rather than trying to push eminent domain and take our property away. You people all witnessed that, and we did, too.
Yeah, I think that would be a, if there was a point to bring up on Emmens County's side, the eminent domain thing has not been received very well over here at all.
And I'm sure you're excited.
Right, exactly. I think public participation definitely changes when you, when you want to use public right-of-way versus something else. So I guess, I guess the comment on the section lines, that would probably be the path of least resistance, if you're going to have that, so. I think other than that, does anybody else have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Senator Don Shively, I represent Standing Rock District Thirty-One. I live basically a hundred miles straight west of here. Without the bridge, it was a hundred and eighty miles, you know, to do that. When I was asked if I would support this concept, I said, "Well, absolutely. I think it's a win-win for both our districts, for both our counties in this thing. I think our access either way is just going to be improve our economic impact and whatever we can do." Because right now, it's pretty stagnant of what we can do because of access, and I think that's a pretty good point. The other thing is, is, you know, you need common commissioners and that, I think you know the importance of bridges and the cost of that, and trying to replace that, even on a county level. But we're working on some things that we think can help with that, and I think that's a, that's a pretty good thing, because infrastructure and access is a pretty good thing. So same thing, just like you, I'm just here to support the issue and go on with that, so thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. Scott Davis, Vice Chairman of District Thirty-One, that accompanies Sioux County, Morton County, and also part of Grant County, too, so, also tribal member from Standing Rock as well, too, the resident man then. So early, my early career back in the nineteen nineties, when I worked for my tribe, this issue was brought up, according to the timeline. And then, fast tracked, about twelve, fifteen years ago, I was appointed to the Commissioner for Unifiers for the State of North Dakota. I worked for three governors, kind of the liaison between the governor, state government, and the tribe, so did that for twelve years, and during that time, this, you know, this issue was brought up again. So the empty flows, you know, as you said, elections come and go, and so I spent a lot of time over here, back home, you know, it's just you, so, but it was, it was brought to my attention from our district members, from some of our constituents that, it was we talked about, so I immediately called our leadership back home and said, "Hey, you know, do we, how do we, what's the next steps here?" So as Ellen had alluded to, or Vice Chairman alluded to, here we are. So I thought it was important just to, you know, bring our district, my senator from our district, and support this, and also have Mr. Andy Zachmeyer from Morton County, where I live in, he's on the line, and also Ken Snyder on the line here from Sioux County. So if you don't mind, gentlemen, I'll have them speak here shortly, so. Andy, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, Andy.
Oh, Vice Chairman, this is Zachmeyer from Morton County. And I also serve on the Vismark Van Anan Metropolitan Planning Organization Board. As far as bridge crossings, there's two corridors that Early County and Morton County are keeping open for possible future bridge development in the Vismark Van Anan area. First, this is the bridge, the corridor that's mostly being opened in Morton County is being prepared. It's in fifty quarters. The Morton County side is usually a position that's very hard. Early County's fifty quarters is a bit moving, and there is some positions that are being strong. The next bridge is Civil Command here, I believe it's five miles south of Fort Reagan State Park. And again, the public hearings are. Morton County's location, representing, is. And, for that area, we have Sioux County, and. 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 And.
Okay, are there any questions for Commissioner Snyder? Um, just for the sake of time on the agenda, because we are running a little bit past, I think we could probably discuss this for hours, to be honest with you, so I think we'll just probably have to table it for another time. But I guess unless anybody else has any other questions or anything, then.
I'm just curious, if enough people on the Emmens County side oppose it, do we have any contact on it with our open others, or just, is this just a you're just nicely coming over to ask permission, we don't matter?
I don't know the answer to that, but you see that the initial letter, 1977 failed because of opposition. So voices count, voices matter, and our job is to, is to help win that battle for everyone's to a goal. We want to be, we want to be clear, we want to be open, every have an opportunity, have a voice to weigh in, to get the best possible plan in front of, in front of us, so. There are going to be people who are just going to see the word "bridge" and are boiling forward with to get some of the benefits to it, we're not going to win everyone. I think if we, we do our own, if we make the case, I think people are going to be in support, we believe that.
I'm going to ask as a commission, because it's presented to me this morning. What's the homicide rate from that side, that you people deal with and Bethrop, in that side of your student system, if there is any at all, versus over here?
I can tell, I can answer that, I can provide that, I can, I can look that up.
Are there any other questions? Well, I think the.
Could have got two before I leave.
Sure.
Need genres here?
Genres?
Yeah.
Not in the room, I don't believe.
Oh, okay, I, I have, I would need that, the genre that comes from, Leroy John, they come from.
Oh, sure, okay.
And there's one other name that's associated with me, if I was growing up, with a boy, a young boy. Dennis Beck.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I live there now, but I always think of, I think of Lynn, I think of Dennis Beck, you literally John, or so.
Well, like I said before, as this process continues, more than welcome to, you know, call ahead, skip along the agenda, but you're more than welcome to send that invitation to you, and and we'll just keep the lines of communication open.
Marles and I will be good friends.
I know, in some discussion with a couple of council, and committee members, too, is that if we're holding, you know, with the feds, or whatever, it might be.
Absolutely.
If you're more of a, like, we don't explore, or whoever, that I don't have a problem with in a community, and that.
Sure.
Exactly.
Okay.
So let's roll that.
Thank you for that.
I want to keep that final.
Absolutely, thanks for coming.
We should.
I think we'll take a couple minute recess, and then we'll probably just move to Acacia and Emily's quarterly extension, or extension report. Just take a couple minute break, back.